Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Bunton.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Krapp.
Here.
Mensah.
Here.
Announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. This evening we have a presentation of the 2017 fiscal year end audit report from Plant Moran.
I gotta move.
My name is Lisa Manata. I'm the audit partner in charge from Plant to Moran of the audit of the city of Mount Clemens. Pleased to be here to present the results of the audit. From a very high-level overview, our audit, we issued an unqualified opinion on the financial statements of the city of Mount Clemens, which you received the bound copy of those financial statements, which means that they're in accordance with all applicable financial requirements that would apply to a city such as the city of Mount Clemens. From a financial result overview, Joe Werner is with me tonight. He's the manager on the account, and he's going to go through a few slides just to give some highlights of the financial results themselves.
So on the first slide here is the general fund revenue. So as we can see, the general fund revenue for the year ending June 30th, 2017 was $10.5 million. At the bottom of the slide, it's broken down by different categories, and so we can see that property taxes showed a decrease during the year, and that was mainly due to the phase-out of the personal property tax. And so that was netted with the increase in the state and federal portion where we saw local community stabilization funds come in. This next slide here is the general fund expenditures. So for the year ended June 30th, 2017, the general fund expenditures were approximately $9.5 million, which is a slight increase from the $9.2 million in the previous year. The main increase of the expenditures was due to the health care in the insurance and pension category at the bottom. This next slide here is the general fund fund balance. We see at the end of the year, the fund balance was approximately $4.1 million, which was an increase from the $3.1 million in the previous year. This slide here is the water supply system. So what it is, is a comparison of the unrestricted cash balance to the debt service, or the principal and interest of the required debt payments throughout the year. So we can see the unrestricted cash balance of a little bit over a million, and the debt service slightly higher for the year. Similar slide here, this is the sewage disposal system. So again, a comparison of the unrestricted cash balance. As we can see, a positive trend over the last several years, and it's exceeded the amount of the debt service to the principal and interest payments. And with that, we would be happy to take any questions.
For those of you that don't know, we had a workshop on this earlier, but I just wanted to repeat that I'm very proud of our department heads for doing so much with less and keeping us on target and keeping the budget in a good place. It's through their hard work and diligence that we're in a positive situation today.
Can you go back to the first slide on the general fund? And maybe give a little bit of an explanation? I don't want to give the impression that we have lost revenue in terms of the personal property taxes. I think that can be a little bit misleading.
Yes. So I'm here, as Joe mentioned, so the property tax line itself went down, and that's because through state law, personal property taxes that are assessed are being phased out over a period of time. And to reimburse the city for that lost personal property tax revenue, there's a new funding source through the local community stabilization authority. So they're taking use taxes and reimbursing local communities for some amount of those personal property taxes that were lost. So that's why property taxes went down, but you'll see state and federal sources went up. So it's really just a shift from one line to the other.
It's not an indication of like people moving out of their homes?
That's correct. That's not an indication of taxable value declines or of lower millage rates or anything like that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, thank you.
Adaptation of the agenda. Need a motion?
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Okay, public participation. This is the time you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and that you adhere to the three-minute rule. So please come to the mic.
Mike Zubis, 221 Cass. I wrote down a bunch of things on this. So first, I would like to make knowledge to the board that there is an ordinance in the city, 20.060, the medical marijuana ordinance of 1987. I read that law. I feel it's a very applicable law when it comes to comparative to the actual state law. So I feel like there's, it was actually kind of wise of whoever was in charge of the board at the time, because it's really reflective of how the law has changed into that. I feel like if there was going to be something changed, that that ordinance would have to be amended to the changes. So I feel like dispensaries should be in the city. I'm not sure if everybody else feels like that way, but I have an interesting look on how that should be. Instead of it being like how Detroit is, where they have, like, where they're allowed to buy old Wendy's and turn them into that, I feel like we could restrict it to the second level and above, just like in the city of Birmingham. Because Birmingham has an ordinance to where they only allow office buildings on the second floor and above. So I feel like if we did that in the city of Mount Clemens, to where dispensaries and testing facilities were on the second floor, that would allow them to be able to have an extra layer of security to where people would have to walk into the building in the general area and then go in elevators or whatnot. And let's see, what's the next section here? I'm hoping that if there's a ratio that could be applied to the testing facilities, because that is very much needed within the law, there's very, a lot of testing is going to be needed, so there's going to be a lot of jobs in that testing area. I feel like there would be a three dispensaries to one testing facility approach in that regards to where there would be enough business for that testing facility, but it wouldn't compromise the facility itself. Because if there's just one-to-one, then there might be a little bit more of a chance of there being collusion with the testing facility, and maybe law is being broken. After that, let's see, yeah, don't allow testing facilities and dispensaries to be in the same building. That would also, might bring up chances of collusion and other illegal activities in that manner. My final recommendation for this part is if you guys get on YouTube when you have some free time, look up Clinton Township Medical Town Hall. It was administered by Bob Gannon, and he said every single person on the Clinton Township Board has to watch that video. It was made a couple months ago, when they had a meeting at the Macomb Community Central Campus. So I would highly recommend it. It's an hour and 45 minutes long, so make sure you grab some popcorn. My second point is to the FCC ruling that was made last week about net neutrality. It's gone now, in the FCC point of view, but I feel like there are options. Options have been laid out by multiple videos on the internet. One is to sue the FCC to stop the ruling. The state of Washington is already on that. Two is to pressure Congress to pass a law that trumps the FCC ruling, something that Senator Gary Peters is already working on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Bain. On behalf of the Greater Morning Star Missionary Baptist Church, I would like to say thank you to the city of Mount Clemens, Laura Fournier, Brian Tingley, Jeff Woods, Stephen Sav, Greg Hoppe from the fire department, and also Abel Demolition, who has finally helped us get that building down on the corner of Northbound Grashit and Robertson. It's been a hectic six or seven months, but it finally got done, and I'd like to thank the city for their working not only with me, for me, to me, by me, and missed phone calls and all the rest, but you've really been helpful, and I'd like to thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have to do my infomercial. Mickey Weiss, 18, 200 Terradrive, Clinton Township, Mount Clemens DDA. I just want to remind everyone that our 24th Annual New Year's Eve Gala is coming up on the 31st. We start our day with our children's New Year's Eve and Never Neverland. It is the sixth annual for that, and it starts at four o'clock for the children, and it runs till nine o'clock. We will have characters in Orleans, Gus's Coney Island, O'Halloran's, and Subway. The characters will be there from four to seven. We'll have a warming center at 70 McComb Place, which is the old Articraft. There we will have the pirates, crafts, drive-in movies, snack bar, and other activities for the children. From four to nine, in Gus's Coney Island, we'll have the fantasy face painters. The pony rides and petting zoo will be from 4:30 to eight. From 4:30 to 8:45, the Thomas the Train rides. There will be three magic shows in the Masonic Lodge, which is at 65 and a half North Walnut. They'll be at 5:30, 6:30, and 7:30. Tickets are available at ABC Magic. The fairy godmother will be telling stories at the ABC Magic Shop at 8:15 till 8:45, and then everyone will go out on the street, and the fairy godmother will start to commence the dropping of the ball and the fireworks for the kids at nine o'clock. And then we will segue into the adult evening, which will be at 9:30. We'll have live entertainment on the stage, which will be placed at Market Street and Main, so that you'll be able to see the fireworks that will be shot off over here in the parking lot. The band starts at 9:30. At 11:55, we will be doing our 50/50 raffle. Last year, our lucky winner won over $3,600 to take home for the evening, which is great. All tickets are available at any of the businesses and restaurants in downtown now at $2 a ticket. We'd like everyone to remember, when the clock strikes midnight, the bicentennial will begin for our city. And I want to remind everyone, if you're still looking for stocking stuffers, please stop here at City Hall, the library, the Anton Art Center, and pick up our bicentennial book. Thank you.
Very good. If anybody here wants raffle tickets, I have them. Okay. Are there any, anyone else? No. We have no administrative responses. Approval of the minutes. Need a motion?
Motion to approve the work session and the commission meeting of December 4, 2017.
Support.
Roll call.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Okay, general business, 9A. Approve the resolution for the deficit elimination plan automobile parking system.
Move to approve the resolution for the Mount Clemens Auto Parking System Deficit Elimination Plan. Support.
With the completion of the 2017 audit, it was determined that the unrestricted net positions deficit balance in the automobile parking system required a deficit elimination plan to be filed with the state of Michigan. The state requires elected body approval of the resolution along with the deficit plan. The automobile parking system plan is a one-year plan that contains itemized revenues, expenses, and changes in unrestricted net assets.
Questions?
Well, as we did with the slides from Plant Moran, I think you should explain that a little bit more, so that people don't think that we have a problem.
Linda, do you want to?
I would be happy to do that, or Linda could.
I'd be happy to do it.
Sure. The state has some pretty strict requirements as far as what they consider a deficit. We had to make an additional bond payment, and because July 1st fell on a weekend, we paid it early, causing the deficit. So that's why we have to file the plan. It's already resolved, but we have to tell the state that. That's why it's a one-year elimination plan.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Okay, approve purchase payments of invoices.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Support.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
No.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
City manager's report.
City offices will be closed on Friday, December 22nd, and Monday, December 25th, for the Christmas holiday, and Friday, December 29th, and Monday, January 1st, for the New Year's holiday. Refuge pickup will run one day behind the week of December 25th and the week of January 1st. Christmas trees will be collected by the city's refuse contractor on your regularly scheduled refuse pickup day beginning December 26th through January 26, 2018. Please make sure the tree is bare and not antiplastic bag when placed at the curb for pickup. The annual Macomb County New Year's Eve Gala will begin at 10:30 PM on Sunday, December 31st, on Main Street. There will be entertainment and a fireworks display at midnight. Celebrations will begin in the downtown area with special events taking place from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, including the annual children's New Year's Eve and Never Neverland. For more information, please contact the Downtown Development Authority at (586) A snow emergency was declared on Wednesday, December 13th, due to the forecasted snowfall. Please remember that when a snowy emergency is declared, all vehicles must be removed from the street per city ordinance 30.030. And on a final note, I'd like to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season, and best wishes for a happy, healthy New Year.
Thank you. Do you have a question on this report?
Yes.
Okay.
Yet again, we discuss this every winter, but I heard multiple comments and complaints about people parking on the street during the snow emergency, and the plows having to go around them, and plowing in people's driveway, and wondering why these cars weren't ticketed or towed.
We can look into that with the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department was notified of the snow emergency. That is the enforcement body of the city for this emergency, so we can look into it and find out what's transpired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Mensah.
Okay. Wait, I gotta find them. So here's some good news. While other Macomb County school districts declined in student enrollment, our Macomb County, or Mount Clemens school system increased by 47 students. Additionally, Vanessa A. Kiesler, Ph.D., the Deputy Superintendent of Education, Student and School Supports from the State of Michigan, Department of Education, sent this letter on November 1st, 2017, to Ms. Teresa Davis, our Superintendent of School, of Mount Clemens Schools. And it says, I quote, "Congratulations. Effective immediately, I am pleased to announce the Michigan Department of Education is releasing Seminole Academy from priority status. Your hard work and focus on data-driven decisions are promising and have had a positive effect on student impact and achievement outcomes. The Michigan Department of Education remains dedicated to providing your district and schools with support to sustain the efforts that have led you to this point," end quote. Congratulations to the Mount Clemens Public Schools. Congratulations to Teresa Davis. Good things are happening in our schools. There have, but here's another one. There have been an increase in homeless students in Macomb County. In the 2010-2011 school year, there were 877 homeless students in Macomb County. In the 2015-2016 school year, that number almost doubled to 1,618. The Macomb Intermediate School District has a program called the Education Program for Homeless Children and Youth. This project assists homeless students with new backpacks, school supplies, socks, personal hygiene items, winter hats and gloves, and gift cards to help each student with, you know, needed clothing or shoes. Please contact the ISD if you wish to help. That's an awful lot of homeless students in Macomb County. There is a new bus service that links to Amtrak stations, and we have a stop right here in Mount Clemens in front of the Anton Frankel Art Center on the corner of Main and Cass. You purchase your bus ticket and your train ticket as a package. The train goes to Chicago for $54. Or you can go to Battle Creek, or you can go to Lansing. The bus will take you to the main, from Grashit, or Main and Cass, to the main bus terminal in either Detroit or Port Huron, and from there, you board your train. This is a two-year contract. Please take advantage of it. You know, pack yourself a lunch, you know, some beverages of your choice. You can get on the train and then play cards all the way down instead of having to drive. It's kind of a cool thing. So AMVETS Post 29 will be celebrating 72 years in our city on February 12th. Their first post was located about where Gus's Coney Island is now. The AMVETS, or the American Veterans, was founded in 1944 by an act of Congress and serves anyone who honorably served or is currently serving in the U.S. Armed Forces or the National Guard Reserves. Two of Post 29 members, Tony Lima and Chuck Petch and I, successfully completed the paperwork and lobbied the county Board of Commissioners to include the AMVETS Post 29 in the annual County Casual Day program. County employees will be donating their jeans dollars on March 30th to Post 29. I want to thank the county for including our local veterans, and I will be urging every county employee that I see to please donate to that post. It's a good thing for our community. And for those of you who don't know, Post 29 is right over here along the river. And finally, in 1961, President John F. Kennedy said, "Christmas expresses the deepest hopes for a world of peace, where love, rather than mistrust, will flourish between neighbors." So Merry Christmas, residents and neighbors. Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford.
First, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I'd like to thank Mr. Woods for the fine job he did during the snow emergency. I had the misfortunes to go into Clinton Township on Carlington and Scott Streets. I couldn't get down there for the snow. Gibb Street, Michigan, and Fesudan, excellent job. That's my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier.
I think there was one person that Ruthie Stevenson forgot to thank when she gave the list for the house demolition at 58 North Grashit, and that's herself. Ruthie was the glue in all of those people that got us, you know, together, got me connected with Pastor Martin. She was the one who kept it going and was our eyes, our ears, and our feet to get it all done. So thank you, Ruthie. You are truly one of Mount Clemens finest, and a treasure. I wish everyone a very happy holiday, and Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and have a safe and happy New Year.
Thank you. Commissioner Bunton.
Okay. I guess the first thing I would like to do is kind of caution everybody about pushing your snow into the streets. If the street plows come through and clean the street, and then you push your snow into the street, it creates the same problem. They're not going to come back through and do your street for the few houses that pushed their snow into the street. So that creates a traffic hazard. It creates a safety hazard, and it could cause some serious accidents. We just want you to, if you can, push the snow onto your grass, onto someplace that's not into the streets, so that we don't have that situation where there's a safety problem. I'd also like to bring to your attention again the free Narcan distribution to the general public to help families and friends deal with opiate overdose. There is a flyer on the front pew, in case someone here would like to know more about it. What's going to happen is on January 9th, 16th, and 23rd of 2018, as well as February 6th, 13th, and 20th of 2018, as well as March 6th, 13th, and 20th of 2018, they will have a free educational program, at which point you will get a Narcan kit that will allow you to perhaps save someone's life that is overdosed on opiates. I won't go into the greater details, but you can always call, the sessions will take place at 2 Crocker Boulevard in Mount Clemens. They would be in the lower level, the purple room. The phone number, if you want more information, is (586) 307-9570. (586) 307-9570. So if that's something that you can use, or you know someone that can use it, please take advantage of it. Drug overdose is the leading cause of accidental deaths in the United States. Every day, about 91 Americans die from opiate overdose. 2 million people in the United States are addicted to prescription opiates. So if you don't think that that's a problem, I think you need to reexamine it. It is a problem, and I think we have an opportunity to address that problem. Well, something on a lighter note. Okay, things to celebrate in the month. December 20th is Go Caroling Day. Bet you didn't know that. December 21st is Winter Solstice Day, actually the first official day of winter, and I guess most of us realize that winter's already here, but the calendar says that's the first day of winter. It's also Forefathers' Day, celebrating the day the pilgrims landed on Plymouth Rock. Of course, December 24th is Christmas Eve, but it's also George Washington's birthday. It's National Chocolate Day. I thought Commissioner Mensah would enjoy that. December 26th is Kwanzaa, which is the first day of Kwanzaa, and it lasts until January 1st. December 31st, obviously, is New Year's Day, or New Year's Eve, I'm sorry. And we need to celebrate that, actually, the passing of one year and the beginning of a new year at 12 o'clock that night, when we have all those activities going on. All right. Commissioner Wisdom. You can give without loving, but you cannot love without giving. Think about that. And just a little lighter note, a successful man is one that can make more money than his wife can spend.
Look, chocolate.
A successful woman is one that can find such a man. And that's by Lana Turner. And with that, we'll say goodnight.
Mr. Krapp.
I'd like to thank everyone that came out to my coffee talk this past week. I had one on Tuesday and on Thursday, and I had a very good turnout, and so I want to thank everyone who takes the time to come out to that. On January 9th and January 20th, I will be hosting again at John's Family Grill. January 9th-
I had one on Tuesday and on Thursday, and I had a very good turnout, and so I want to thank everyone who takes the time to come out to that. On January 9th and January 20th, I will be hosting again at John's Family Grill. January 9th is a Tuesday, and it'll be at 9:30. January 20th is a Saturday, and that is 9:30 as well. And speaking of John's Family Grill, John's Family Grill is hosting their 5th Annual Free Breakfast Buffet for everyone, and it will support local homeless programs. So, sorry, excuse me. So come out and have a free breakfast at their buffet, and then give a donation if you can. And 100% of all the proceeds donated, including the family of John's Family Grill, excuse me, donates all of the food for the buffet. So every donation that's given is given to a local homeless program. And this year, it will go out to the First Methodist Church at 57 South Grashit and St. Peter's Catholic Church at 95 Market, so both Mount Clemens. And last year, they raised, I believe, over $6,000, and so, in one breakfast session at John's Family Grill. So we're hoping that we can beat, beat the record of last year. So come out now and support that program. It really helps a lot of people. And that's, oh, and I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, of course.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell.
I want to comment on the year-end audit that we had here. It is a credit to the administration and employees of the city for their proactive approach, and this is past and present employees and administration that put our city on a path to financial stability. And in reading what's happened to our neighbor, Frazier, I can feel the pain that they have. So the way that we handle things here, the administration is doing an excellent job. And lastly, a healthy and happy New Year to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to remind everybody that you still have time this week to come and purchase any the books, the Mount Clemens books, the t-shirts, sweatshirts. We have hats, we have mugs, so if you need some last-minute gifts, please come and see us at City Hall. We'll be more than happy to sell those to you. I'm looking forward to seeing everyone on New Year's Eve. It's always a fun time, so come on out and enjoy the festivities. Thank you to DPS for a great job they did during the snowstorm that we had, and also for the audit. It does speak volumes of the leadership here in administration and all of the employees that work here in the city who contribute to making the budget, the end, year-end budget as good as it was. Many of us were here when it wasn't that good, and so I just want to congratulate all the employees. I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, and please be safe, and also please take care of your neighbors who may not have anybody. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Post. Can you adjourn?